Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Today's Monday, February 24th. Got a lot on the agenda this evening, so we're going to start with a review of some bills that we need to pay, or a bill that we need to pay for $579.70 to the Community Advocate for the February 24th, 2025 legal notices. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Next on the agenda is to review and accept meeting minutes. We have quite a few meeting minutes that were provided to us, so I'd like to just open it up to conversation within the board if anyone has any questions or comments on any of the meetings. Okay.
I will just comment that I cannot review A and B, August 28th, 2019, and 2020 because I was not there.
Okay. Think that's okay? All right. Can I get a motion, please?
Point of order. Can I say that I'd like to move to approve them as noticed, as opposed to reading them all off, or shall I read them all off?
Maybe do A and B first, as Ann will abstain, and then...
Then do the rest?
And then do, yeah, C through K.
Okay. So I move to approve meeting minutes for August 28th, 2019, and August 24th, 2020.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
And I move to approve meeting minutes, the balance as noticed on tonight's agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, moving right along into our first agenda item. This is a request to withdraw a hearing for 614 South Street. This was for a variance. Can I get a... Can I get a motion to request, to approve the request to withdraw?
I move to approve the request to withdraw.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, next on the agenda, this is to hear the appeal... Let me just make sure this matches up. Hear the appeal of Amy Armstrong of 150 Old Mill Road in Shrewsbury for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 6, Table 1, for an in-home business upon property located at 150 Old Mill Road in the Rural B zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 32, Plot 2, 3, 5, 0, 0, 0. Can I ask the applicant to please step forward?
Hi.
Hi, have a seat. If you could state your name for the record, please.
Amy Armstrong.
Hi, Amy. Can you let us know about what you're here for?
So, I've been baking for a while now. I want to turn away from a hobby into more of type business to make income and do like farmer's markets and maybe like local stores, like the Maple in Maine, and just like little nicks like that. So I'm just trying to start the process so I can do inspection and all of that.
Okay. All right. Peter, you want to start?
No questions, no concerns.
All right, Ann?
I have no questions.
Kevin?
Nope, I got nothing.
David?
I just want to confirm that you're doing the baking in-house, but you're not going to have any, like, parking or visitors?
So, I think they had brought, they brought up parking in, on occasion, I would do like a porch pickup, and they would park in my driveway, and it would be like on occasion, it wouldn't be like multiple people, like, coming in and out.
You, would you say, like, almost like by appointment only?
Yeah, like, I would talk to them, like, ahead of orders, and then be like, oh, on like this Saturday, you could come to my house and like pick up. I have three little kids at home, so it's a little hard to get out, but if that's an issue, I could do, like, meet up with them or something.
No, that's fine. I'm okay. That's all.
Okay. Just, so seven days a week?
It's more so, like, if somebody were to, like, talk to me and be like, can you make this for like a birthday or something like that? And then I would, like, make it for a certain day. I can't really see it being like seven days a week. Hopefully, maybe someday, but more so just baking as needed.
Any concerns? I know that part, where your house is...
Yes.
With whole Harrington Ave, Old Mill, and this is really just more of a point of concern for just traffic flow. Any issues with getting in and out of your driveway?
For myself?
Or for anybody that comes to your house?
Not, not particularly. Usually, there's like open space in the driveway. There, like, my driveway goes like this.
You have a wide driveway?
Yeah, yeah. So there's always open space, or like when I know somebody's coming, then they will. They shouldn't park on the curb, though. There's enough in the driveway.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. Ann, anything?
No, I just think if you wanted to condition, you know, the potential for seven days a week, you know, between certain hours, I didn't know if that was something, you know, kind of seems like the board is fine with that open-ended, but other than that, I have no other comments.
Okay. All right. This is a public hearing, so is there anyone in the, in attendance that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay. Can I get a motion to close a public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing?
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve the special permit under Section 6, Table 1, for an in-home business at 150 Old Mill Road in the Rural B District.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Congratulations. Next on our agenda, this is to hear the appeal of Robin DePina, 290 Boylston Street, Shrewsbury, Mass., for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 6, Table 1, to construct an in-law apartment upon property located at 290 Boylston Street in the Residence B1 zoning district. Subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 10, Plot 054000. Could the appellant please step forward?
Hello.
How are you?
Good. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Robin DePina, and this is Jay Hubbell.
Welcome. Let us know what you'd like to do.
So we are requesting to do an in-law apartment for my mom. My dad just passed away. She is in a house in South Row that's three stories. It's way too big. She's got some handicap, you know, issues, so she cannot, she cannot be alone. So we are looking to move her in with us.
Are you the contractor?
No.
Oh.
He is my fiancee contractor, is Ed Newell.
Got it. Great. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. Peter, you want to start?
Um, no questions at the moment.
Ann?
Um, I don't think I have any questions. Are there any waivers being requested?
None that I am aware of.
I don't think so.
Let me just check.
I don't see any.
No. I think there are.
Okay. I think it looks like a good project, so I don't have any questions.
Great. Kevin?
Yeah, no, I haven't anything to add either. Simple layout, seems to satisfy what we need for an in-law apartment, so appreciate the plans. Thank you.
David?
Looks straightforward, no questions for me.
Great. I feel the same way. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay. Can I get a motion, please, to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
Sure. And for the board, I'd add the standard conditions that we usually use for in-law apartments, that the in-law can only be occupied by individuals who are legally related to the principal residence, and they're specific to the applicant and remain in effect only during the ownership and occupancy of the premises, as long as no one objects. So I move to approve a special permit under Section 6, Table 1, to construct an in-law apartment at 290 Boylston Street in the Residence B1 District, following two conditions. One, the in-law apartment shall only be occupied by individuals who are legally related to the principal residence of the premises, and two, the rights authorized by the issuance of this special permit shall be limited to Robin DePina and shall remain in effect only during their ownership and occupancy of the premises.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, this is to hear the appeal of Dean Sokos, 123 Maple Ave in Rutland for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7C, Table 3, to construct an accessory building 39.3 feet from the rear yard where 40 feet is required upon property located at 29 Bridle Path in the Residence B1 zoning district. Subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 10, Plot 054000. If you could state your name for the record, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dean Sokos, and I'm the contractor.
Okay.
So we kind of stumbled upon this, we were just trying to finish a poolhouse that Frank had built many, many years ago, and then realized they were short on how they put it in. So over the years, he really never realized it until now, when we tried to get a new plot plan, and figured, realized that we were a little short in the back. So that's part of the issue.
And you're short by seven inches?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Peter, questions?
Um, no questions. I think it's a de minimis error. Seems like a good-faith error, and to me, the hardship is that everything's already built, has been for a long time, and to ask you to rip it out for whatever it is, .7 feet, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So, that's all I have.
Ann?
I agree with Peter.
I agree as well.
Okay.
Same here.
It's a very agreeable board this evening. I agree too, so...
Brief and free, we're doing good.
Anybody else? I'm not meaning to make a joke of it, but I mean, we are agreeable this evening. Perhaps the audience will not be. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on this matter? Please, if you could step forward, right up here. Is it right up there? Yep. And if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Su Chang Chen. I'm from 31 Bridle Path.
Okay.
So we neighbor. I don't understand the construction, so where will be on the lot and how it will affect it?
Sure. I'm gonna, okay, do you have another question?
That's it, yeah.
Okay.
Because I don't understand about, you know, 39 and then three, three feet, and then at 40 feet, or something like that.
Right.
And where will be the construction on the lot? Where, where will it be?
So there's no construction? It's already there? The poolhouse that's there?
Uh huh.
When they built it, they built it a little too far back. So it's seven inches too far back. So we're just asking for variance for, for where it is now. But there's not a new building going up or anything like that?
Oh.
So through the chair, so what he's saying is the building that's there...
Yeah.
They're not changing anything about that building.
All right.
When it was built, it was seven inches too close to the property line. Forty feet is what our zoning bylaws require.
I see.
And it was 39.3 feet away when they went to measure it for the survey.
Okay.
So it was presumably a mistake that was not caught at that, you know, at the original building. I think it was 2019 when this was first built. So now they're back in front of us. The prop, the building stood vacant for a while...
Yes.
Under, not constructed, and now they're back to being interested in completing the building. So they're here in front of us to get a relief for seven inches, being short seven inches on their property line.
Also, like, I fixed it, something like that.
Yeah, we're going to finish the inside of it. We're going to finish the building, because it was never finished.
Ah, I see. Okay.
So there probably won't be a lot of changes that you will see, I assume?
No, there's no, really no changes on the exterior. It's all interior.
Okay.
So the building you see is going to be the building that we're approving.
Already there.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
Great. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve a variance under Section 7C, Table 3, to construct an accessory building 39 and 3/10ths feet from the rear yard when 40 feet is required at 29 Bridle Path in the Residence B1 District.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Okay, next on the agenda, to hear the appeal of Joshua Lee Smith, 311 Maple Street in Worcester for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7E4B, to build a single pylon sign that will exceed the allowable 200 square feet on property located at 571 Boston Turnpike in the Commercial Business zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 34, Plot 024001. Welcome, and if you could state your name for the record, please.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Joe Duquette. I'm a colleague of Joshua Lee Smith, who regrettably couldn't be here tonight, from the law firm of Baudich and Dewey. And on behalf of the applicant, joining me tonight is the sign engineer from Viewpoint Sign and Numbing, Bart Steele, and potentially online representative from the owner, Phil Schwakman. I'm hoping to stay on this momentum train here.
Caught that one.
So you may be thinking to yourselves, this looks familiar, and that's because we were just here before you in September for the same exact sign. Nothing has actually changed with the proposed sign, but when we went to go submit a building permit, the building commissioner had identified an additional provision of the zoning bylaws with which we did not seek relief from, and that relief was for individual signs being limited to 200 square feet in area. I can, I'm happy to go more into detail on, on this, but considering the board has already reviewed this, I'll leave it open to questions.
Is there, which specific sign is more than 200?
So that's exactly what, how we had interpreted the ordinance. The entire sign is the issue, and the entire square footage of the sign, I believe, is about 625 square feet. So the hardship would obviously be, we need to do exactly what we're trying to do, is consolidating all of the signs across the property, so...
And if I may, just to refresh your memory, we're going to be removing 727 square foot of sign and replacing it with the smaller sign that you approved in September.
Yes. Yes. All right. Peter, questions?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand the interpretation issue. So the, we're treating the entire pylon sign there as...
One entire?
As one...
That is the interpretation?
Okay.
That was brought to our attention.
Interesting. Okay. I had not interpreted it that way. I figured that each individual... Okay, fair enough. I think, well, it doesn't change the, where I land on it, I think. I think we're significantly consolidating and decreasing the overall signage area, and I see that as consistent with the goals of the bylaws, so I have no issues.
Ann?
Yeah, I think visually, it's, looks a lot better. I think it's safer than having many different sides, signs. I think it's good.
No issues when you first came aboard? No issues, no.
Each of the individual signs, all of them, are still less than the 200 square feet? Just curious.
Yeah. I think that's the only one, maybe at-home sign.
That one would be the biggest.
Page nine of the presentation.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the answer is yes.
Yeah. Eighty, 126, 126, and then six of them are 45 square feet, and one's 22.2.
Okay.
Did he already do the math? You beat me to it?
No, it's...
Yeah, they already...
Individual. Below 200, yeah.
The math is there already.
Yeah, you have it there on the table.
See it, Dave?
Yeah, yeah. So all of the individual signs are still less than 200.
Below 200.
And it was, I think, everybody's original interpretation, at least on this board.
Right.
Yeah, I have no, I have no objections, no problems.
Okay. All right. Public hearing. Anyone out there wish to be heard on the matter? Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing?
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve a variance under Section 7E4B to build a single pylon sign that will exceed the allowed 200 square feet at 571 Boston Turnpike Commercial Business District.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda, this is to hear the appeal of Joe Santiago, 87, Main Boulevard in Shrewsbury, for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7, Table 2, to construct an addition 34.1 feet from the rear yard where 40 feet is required on a property located at 87 Main Boulevard in the Residence B1 zoning district. Subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 29, Plot 205000. If you could please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Joel Santiago.
Good evening, Joel. Give us a little bit of an overview on what you'd like to do, please.
So I'm trying to give, I'm trying to do an addition in-law and give my parents more living space. As you can tell, I'm just looking for, do we extra feet from the overhang from the back of the yard?
Right. Okay. Peter, do you have any questions?
I also have a letter of support from the neighbors.
Oh, great.
Do you mind me giving that to you?
Yep, do we have that in our file?
I don't think so.
If, do you have copies? So if you give me that, we have to keep it, if that's okay?
Okay, that's fine.
All right, then, if you bring it forward, we'll read it?
All right.
Appreciate you getting that. Thank you. Oh, okay.
So I give my usual, my usual spiel, I guess. So to grant the relief that you're asking for, we need to find that there's a hardship. Under the statute, the hardship is that the soil shape or topography of your land, or the location of existing structures on your land, makes it, would make it basically unfair to apply the rules to you in your particular situation. I take it from your application and from the diagram here, that the hardship here is in so much the shape of the lot, where it's a rectangle, or the slope, or anything like that, where it looks pretty flat. It's more that the, the house kind of is where it is, and the building envelope is pretty narrow, and it really limits your ability to add on in any meaningful way because of where the house already is. Is that a fair statement of the hardship?
Okay.
Okay. All right. I don't have anything additional in that case.
Thank you for explaining that, Peter. Ann?
So just one question. Did you consider putting the addition where the deck is now?
No, I didn't consider that. I would have to keep the deck if...
Because you wanted to keep the deck?
Yeah.
Okay. And can you talk a little bit about, there's some notations behind the deck about the stone patio and the fire pit?
So it's just stairs going down to a patio with a fire pit with chairs around it, just to accompany friends and family when they come over.
Okay. So if you were to build the addition where the deck is, would that sort of encroach on the patio and the fire pit?
Oh, yeah, a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
I guess my only question, it's, so you said it's just living space?
Yeah, for my elderly parents, I just want to give them more space.
Bedrooms, living room?
Yeah.
That kind of thing?
Yes.
Okay. No kitchen, or?
Yeah, hopefully a kitchenette.
Okay.
Something they can, it's an in-law, so they, they don't have to move away, so they can stay with me, and then just more living space for them.
Okay.
Down in the basement.
Thank you. Any questions?
Do you, so this, this building was constructed in 1959?
I looked it up. That's my mistake. It was built in 1968, the house.
1968?
Yes, that's my, that's my apologies.
Okay, so it was in '68?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with Peter's assessment. I think the lot size is what it is, and the building already occupies all of it, pretty much. So you're doing what you can with what you have, and I do agree that the building, the existing building is the hardship. That's all.
Right. I agree. It's a tough one, because a variance has a higher threshold of requirements for us, but I think that the, the size and shape of the lot, and where the house is on it, prevents you from really doing much else, so it's how we're kind of all seeing the same set of information that were provided, so thank you for that. Okay, any other questions?
Um, and just to, because I read this application as additional living space, it's just like another bedroom, or, you know, a living, you know, a living room as well, den for elderly parents, but will it be full access from, you know, your existing home?
Yes.
Okay, there's no doors, there's no...
No.
Okay. Because then, I guess, I guess I'm stuck at the in, like, where we...
The nuance of the in-law?
Do we need a special permit for the, for it to be an in-law as well? I guess if there's no external access and it's not separate, it is really just...
All kitchen, right?
Well, even with the kitchen, you can have two kitchens in your house.
You're right.
Yeah, so I think it's, I think it's just an expansion of living space in that case.
That's the way I would interpret it.
Does this encroach on the number of people living at the premises?
Related.
Yeah.
So it doesn't make a difference?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Okay, okay.
Okay, okay, thank you for talking that out.
Sure. And I also think it's a relatively small amount of relief. It doesn't go any further than the existing deck. So in terms of the spirit of the bylaw, it doesn't seem like it's violating anything.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. Can I get a motion, please?
So we're not doing an in-law, so we don't need the conditions?
Correct.
So yes. So I'm, in that case, yes. So I move to approve a variance under Section 7, Table 2, to construct an addition 34 and 1/10 feet from the rear yard setback where 40 feet is required at 87 Main Boulevard in the residence B1 district.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along. Our last appeal is to hear the appeal of Alex Filieri, 120 South Flag Street, Worcester, Mass, for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 6, Table 1, to create an in-law apartment in the basement of the dwelling on property located at 23 Francis Ave in the residence B1 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 22, Plot 365000. If you could state your name for the record, please.
Steven Filieri.
Sorry for mispronouncing your name? I think I mispronounced it.
Oh, no, no worries.
Okay. Steven, if you could let us know what you're here for, please.
Sure. So our client has been diagnosed with a debilitating health concern, has decided to age in place, and there is a health, a family member or someone who is considered his family that is providing care and living in the, in the house to do so. The space is cramped. Right now, there's, there's only living space on the one floor with the one small bathroom. They're really, their initial desire was to increase the size of the bathroom, but he cannot be without a bathroom. So they decided to do an in-law downstairs to create living space and an additional bathroom, which can be used while the upstairs bathroom is renovated and made larger for equipment and such. There'd be no changes to the outside of the building. Footprint's exactly the same, just finishing off the basement.
Okay. Thank you. Peter, questions?
Yes, I didn't, I didn't have this question before, but I just wanted to clarify something. So normally for an in-law, it's somebody who's a legal relative. It sounded like you were saying that this is someone who's a caretaker, who is, who is like a family member, but is not a family member. Can you sort of tease that out for me a little bit?
Sure. So, you know, I'm, I'm the contractor, so I, I don't have a lot of detail, except for the fact that this person, as I was told, is considered his family, is living there, and apparently the, and I have no, nothing to back this up, but apparently the arrangement is that when Mr. Breed passes, the house is going to be given to the person who's now providing care, so...
Okay.
Sounds like a family member?
Yeah, well, it's hard to tell, I think. And I don't, and again, without the applicant here, I don't suppose you know the answer to this, but there isn't any rent being paid or anything like that by the person who'd be living at the house? It's okay if you don't know, it's fine.
I don't.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. So that, I would just say to the board, I think that not being totally clear on whether this person's a relative or a caretaker gives me a little bit of pause, but I'm interested to hear what other folks think about that.
Anne?
I just have a couple of structural questions. Is there going to be a separate egress outside? Or how, how do you access the new space?
There will be a separate egress on the floor plan, the stairs on the far right side, and on the TV. The stairs that come up, and you see the jog and the foundation that comes to the right. Can I just point this out on the TV? Can you see this one?
Yep.
Right here. So the stairs come up from the basement, and there's a door to the outside right here, a door to the garage here, and a door to the kitchen, or into this space right here. So three-door, best to be able, right at the top of the stairs.
And this new space is being built in the basement?
Correct. There'll be another permit to renovate the upstairs bathroom after the basement is finished.
I don't have anything else right now.
No, I don't have anything else either.
Dave?
More of a question for the board, or for Louise. Is there, is there a requirement for there to be two...
Egress?
Modes of egress for a living space in a basement?
I would have to ask about a basement. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure.
There is an emergency egress window.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right in the back here, sorry.
If it's a bedroom or living space.
And it's identified as a bedroom on the plans.
Right.
Large window would be removed and replaced with, with one that opens.
Okay.
Emergency egress.
Perfect. That's, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
And that's a change to what's existing now?
It's the same, it's the same window opening?
Yep.
Because right now, there's a big fixed pane in the center, and double hungs on the side. They don't allow the, the necessary egress. So it's going to be changed to sliders.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay. So it's above grade?
It's above grade, yeah. It's like eight inches above grade in the back. That window.
There? That's all I have.
Yeah, I think what we're hung up on just a bit is the in-law interpretation and the family. Peter's question about rent, you know, we're not approving a two-family situation. That's what we're trying to get at. I, I guess, given the health issues and the interpretation that you've defined with regard to the relationship between the owner and the person who's providing care...
I mean, still, you're within, you know, the board to continue as well, if you're not comfortable, and if you want those questions answered.
I'm not totally hung up on it, but I'm going to acquiesce to the other board members. I mean, Peter?
I, if, depending on how folks feel, I'd be open to doing the standard conditions based on the representations of Mr. Filieri. You know, limiting it to legal relatives of the principal resident and sunsetting it with the owner. And, you know, we presume that people follow the law. We presume that people follow the rules. And they'd obviously, if they were doing something other than what the conditions were, they'd be doing that at their own risk.
So we would condition our decision to say that when the home gets sold, it would be sold without an in-law or...
And not as a two-family?
And not as a two-family, correct. So we're not giving you the approval for two separate parties to live in the house? And that it would sunset with the current owner's ownership? So that's, and that's the best that we can do, given the circumstances that we have in front of us?
Well, and that whoever the occupant of the in-law is, is a legal relative of the owner, the principal, or not the owner, but the principal resident, so...
And so I also would want to note that we've been given information that the person who's going to be living there is someone with a disabling medical condition. I think it would be reasonable for us to assume that that person might fall within the Americans with Disabilities Act. And I think it might be a reasonable accommodation for us to allow an in-law for that person plus a caregiver